Thank you very much. I'd like to call to order the annual board meeting of the Kentucky Retirement System. And with that, I'd like to ask our legal counsel to read the legal public statement.
Yes ma'am. This is a regular meeting of the Kentucky Retirement Systems Board of Trustees. This meeting is being broadcast via video teleconference pursuant to Kentucky Revised Statute Section sixty-one point eight-two-six and may be viewed by the public at the Kentucky Public Pensions Authority offices at twelve-sixty Louisville Road in Frankfurt, Kentucky. It is also being broadcast to the public via Facebook. If you are speaking and not appearing by video, please identify yourself. In the event the video or audio broadcast is interrupted, we will attempt to reestablish a connection. If a connection cannot be reestablished within thirty minutes, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled to another date. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael. Sherry, roll call please.
All right, yes ma'am. Ms. Hampton?
Here.
Mr. Atkins?
Here.
Ms. Bova?
Here.
Ms. Eves?
Here.
Mr. Lane?
Here.
Dr. Miller? Dr. Miller? You may be on mute. Um, Mr. Piercy?
Sorry, Sherry, my phone muted and I'm in my car and I couldn't, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Piercy?
I'm here.
Mr. Summers?
Here.
And Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Thank you.
Sherry, were there any public comments?
Uh, no ma'am, no public comment for today.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, we might have a record meeting here. Okay, we have the minutes from March twelfth of two thousand and twenty-five to approve. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Thank you. A second? All in favor? Oh wait a minute, let me see if there's any discussion. Any discussion on the minutes?
I'm sorry, who was the second? Mary Eves. Oh, thank you, thank you.
All those in, are, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. The motion is adopted. And now I'm going to turn this over to John for the election of officers.
Yeah, good morning. Uh, for the election of officers, the first officer to be elected is the chair. Lynn Hampton has served this in the past. Up to the present date. So, um, seeking nominations for the chair for this upcoming year.
I'll nominate Lynn Hampton.
Second.
Okay. Uh, any other nominations? Uh, hearing none, let's, uh, have a vote on that. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Any abstentions? So Lynn, uh, Lynn, you're the chair for this upcoming year.
Thank you, John.
Do the other officers?
Uh, sure.
Okay.
I want to thank you all. I want you to know that this is, I'm completing my third year, so the next year, the fourth year, I will not be able to, uh, for the year after this, this, we're doing my fourth year, the year after that, I will not be able to run. So, anybody thinking about wanting to take the chair, call me and I can kind of let you know, it's not, it's not a tough job. We've got a good crowd here. And thank you all again for reelecting me. So now we have a, the election of the vice chair. Are there any nominations for vice chair? The current vice chair is Pruitt.
Madam Chair, I would nominate Pruitt to be our vice chair.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
Second.
Got two seconds. Uh, I think, Ramsey, I think you were the first second. Uh, is there any discussion? Is there a motion to approve? Oh, we already did that. Is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All those in, uh, the, the motion is adopted and Pruitt is the vice chair. Um, the sixth item on the agenda does not require a vote, but I have the authority to appoint members, to members in it. So I would like to ask and, uh, Pruitt, if he would be chair of the Investment Committee again?
I will accept.
Okay, thank you very much. And Pruitt, then you have the ultimate responsibility of, of appointing the vice chair and the, uh, Actuarial Committee. So we'll, we'll leave that to you. It's not part of the agenda. Okay, PPW Board of Elections. Steve, this has you on the list for that?
Yes, thank you and good morning. Uh, this is simply, um, in accordance with the KRS Investment Proxy Voting Policy. Uh, I'm making a recommendation that the board authorized the CIO to act as the agent to vote for the election of PP, PPW Directors at their annual shareholder meeting in May. Um, and consistent with the proxy voting policy, as the election of directors is considered a routine voting issue, unless there is a proxy fight for seats on the board, the vote would be in favor of the proposed slate of directors.
Is there any discussion? Is the proposed board the current board?
Uh, so there will be a new proposed board. C yesterday nominated one individual and I believe K and S need to each nominate an individual as well.
Okay, so then, um, let's see, the, the K boards, the, the member, the current members are, um, Jerry, and he is leaving the board, uh, Keith and me. So I guess, I'm not sure, do I, do I nominate? Michael, do I nominate Keith, Keith and me, or how is that done?
So, um, Keith is almost nominated, um, by, by default. Um, he, the, the current board makeup, and Vicky, I know you're on, if you want to, to chime in here as well, but there, uh, the PPW Board is, has to be made up of an SPRS representative, a KRS, and, um, a CERAS representative. Um, and so Keith is, on as the SPRS representative. KRS needs to nominate a representative. You need to formally nominate, um, an SPRS representative. CERS has nominated theirs yesterday. So there needs to be a nomination of, from the board of those representatives to the ballot. Uh, a vote on those nominees, and then there also needs to be a vote to allow, uh, Steve Ruler to vote, um, the proxies for the, for that ballot.
Okay, I see that. So right now then, um, I, so do we need to nominate Keith? That seems odd that we can, okay, so we can.
If I can speak on this for a second, Ms. Hampton. So the PPW bylaws indicate that the Board of Directors shall be made up of a representative from SPRS, KERS, and CERS, as Michael, um, alluded to. KRS, though, the board represents SPRS and KERS. So it does not have to be Keith. Or the SPRS actual person, because KRS as a whole represents SPRS and KERS. It just has been Keith, and he is wonderful on it. And PPW would love to have him remain on it. Um, but we were just saying, there needs to be two persons nominated from KRS to go on the ballot for the PPW, uh, to represent SPRS and KERS's interests.
Okay, thank you. And on, on KRS, I am currently the third person, I guess, of the three, and I'm also treasurer, as they told me this morning. So, um, with that, I think we'd like, it, does anyone else, is anyone interested in serving on PPW? Okay, I, then would somebody make a nomination of the two members of KRS? One is Keith and the other is me.
Madam Chair, I would, uh, move that we nominate Lynn and Keith to serve as the KRS representatives to PPW. And that further, we authorize, uh, staff to vote, um, in that election on our behalf.
Thank you very much, Dave. It's quite the honor. Okay, we need a second?
It'll look good on the resume.
That's right.
A second.
Okay, thank you, William. Okay, with that, uh, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. And that included the second motion. Michael, are you comfortable with that? See there? Or Vicky, are you?
Sorry, I was, I was muted. I think that, and that Mr. Atkins' motion covered both the nominations and, uh, and the vote, so I think, um, we're good on that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, the next thing we have, uh, and the next thing we have is two. Uh, we have contract renewals. On the Denton contract, I will say that, uh, John Chilton, uh, got with Janet, negotiated this tough contract where there is another add, year added and no increase in cost. And I think we get our money's worth out of Denton's. That's my comment on it. Uh, is there any discussion on this? And if not, will someone make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We renew the contract as, as presented in the, uh, Board Book.
Thank you, Pruitt. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ramsey. And then all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, the motion is passed. Now, the next one is a real controversial one. We have our renewing John Chilton's contract.
Lynn, Lynn, it's Mary. I should abstain from the Denton's contract.
Okay. You got that? Have you got that, Sherry?
Yes, ma'am, I will make that note. Thank you.
Okay, and thanks, Mary, for bringing that up. Um, okay, on the Chilton con, John Chilton contract, um, we, the contract as it is, has, uh, it, it's a tough thing to explain. In fact, I asked John to explain it to me. What we've been doing with John's contract is, for the last few years, is giving John the con, the, the salary increase that, um, all state employees got. And so, in the beginning, we were giving it to him at the end of the year, because there was an actual bump in the salary, um, back in two thousand and twenty-three. So then we said, okay, let's do it at the end of the year. We're trying to change it to the beginning of the year. So, if everybody is satisfied with that discussion, or wants to know more, please ask. Michael understands it and will can amend the contract as to, um, reflect that.
And Lynn, if I may speak to that, um, quickly, Sherry, if you could go to page sixteen of, of Board Books. Just quickly, so the, the board will understand kind of what's being talked about here. What we did, um, in this version of the contract under the salary, uh, components here. Uh, um, he's currently being paid in the current contract year, the salary you see there on, on the screen in your board, in the Board Books. And then we added the sentence after that, that says that if the Commonwealth of Kentucky grants all employees an increase in pay during the term of this contract, that the employee shall receive those pay increases up and without the need to amend this contract. And discussion with, with Mr. Chilton and, and John, please feel free to, to step in here. Um, it is, it is my understanding that Mr. Chilton, um, in, in receiving the, um, the same increases in pay that the state employees have received for the past four years, um, Mr. Chil, those started with Mr. Chilton, um, a year late. Um, so when the state employees received, um, an eight percent increase, um, on July first of two thousand and twenty-two, I believe, Mr. Chilton did not receive that increase until July first of two thousand and twenty-three. And so he's always been working a year behind on those increases. Um, so currently, the state employees are scheduled to get, uh, all state employees will get a three percent increase on July first of two thousand and twenty-five this year. First day of this contract, this new contract. So John would, Mr. Chilton would receive that increase. The, the question comes is, that is the last currently scheduled increase for state employees. Next year is a budget session for the legislature. We have no idea if we will receive one or not. John, um, however, Mr. Chilton did not receive, uh, the three percent increase that the state gave employees last year. Because he's working a year in arrears, the state gave all employees an eight percent increase, a six percent increase, and then a three and a three. Mr. Chilton will have received the eight percent and a three percent, an eight percent, a six percent, and then the first of the three percent is what he will get July first, two thousand and twenty-five. So, he has requested that we amend this contract to reflect that, um, rather than having this sentence in here about getting whatever raise the state gives to all of its employees, that we just amend the contract to reflect what salary he will earn, um, in the year of, uh, from July first, twenty-five through June thirty, twenty-six, and then the salary he will earn from June, uh, July first, twenty-six through June thirty, twenty-seven. Reflecting the three percent increase from year to year on each of those. Um, you know, as legal drafting this contract, I told Mr. Chilton, w- we will draft whatever contract he and the board agrees to. We don't offer an opinion on that. That's between the board. I just wanted to express to the board, and, and Mr. Chilton, feel free to chime in. That is what is being proposed as the amended portion of, from what you're looking at here versus what we would change that language to, to reflect. So, Mr. Chilton, if you want to offer anything additional, I just want the board to understand that if, um, what we may change, if that's what is agreed to here, what the difference in the contracts would look like.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. The, my understanding is that I'll get the three percent, uh, for this upcoming fiscal year, and then for twenty-seven, another three percent. So I will have gotten all of the increases that are currently applied to state employees. And I'm okay with that.
Thank you, John. Are there any questions on this amendment, a proposed amendment to the contract that's in the Board Book?
Yeah, Madam Chair, um, I, I might ask, Michael, Michael, why wouldn't we just simplify this and catch John up on all of the, the, uh, tacitly approved, uh, pay increases for state employees? And just then, uh, set a salary as of July one and say that any future, um, pay increases authorized by the legislature or for which John would otherwise be eligible will take effect on the date upon which those raises take effect? Just get him caught up and then say for the future, uh, when state employees get it, he gets it?
That, that is, that is perfectly within the board's purview. As, as I told John, he and I was discussing it, I, I try, as, as legal counsel, I try to do what, draft from the legal perspective, what, what the parties agree to and, and not offer, you know, those types in, input into those types of decisions to the parties as to what you should or shouldn't do. Just, I will write on, write into the contract to make, give effect to what you all decide to do. So.
You're not advocating, you're giving options. I love that. Well, Madam Chair, I, I don't see any reason to delay, uh, increasing compensation for compensation that John would be entitled to under the general philosophy that John gets what all other, uh, state employees would get. Well, we have delayed that because of the, the, uh, review of the contract in our own, uh, doing, but, um, my preference would be to calculate all quote-unquote "past due" state employee increases, apply those to, um, Mr. Chilton's salary, uh, to be effective, uh, July one, and for him from that date forward to receive, on the date state employees receive it, any general pay increase authorized by law.
I would agree with that, as long as there's no other legal ramifications while we can't do that. But I, I would wholeheartedly agree with that.
Okay, uh, let me refresh your memory on what happened back in two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, because there was that, uh, eight percent salary increase from the state. The decision was made that because we were actually going from forty thousand to seventy-five thousand, that we, we wanted to give him the, the raise, but didn't feel like doing it right altogether. He was getting the seventy, he was getting the, um, uh, twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand, thirty thousand, twenty-five thousand, whatever it is, uh, raise, and why not, uh, just give him the other raise at that? So it was more of a uh, a, a picture rather than, uh, not getting the raise. So I, I think that what you all have said, um, sounds very reasonable. Let me see if there's any other comments, and then we'll seek if you want to make the motion. Are there any com, any other comments?
Lynn, it's Mary. Um, is the eighty-five thousand, eight sixty in the draft? Does that include the three percent that was supposed to apply? January, July one for other state employees?
Okay, no, no ma'am, it does not. That, the eighty-five thousand, eight sixty that's on the page is what he is currently making. He has made that since July first of two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you.
So he's been earning that for the past year, past fiscal year.
So we would be, the, in the, the discussion, he would, his salary would be taken to ninety-one oh eighty-nine? Is that correct?
I believe that would, if, if what the current discussion based on Mr. Atkins and Mr. Summers' comments would basically increase his current salary by six percent, unless the instruction was to increase it by three percent and then increase that by three percent, which would, you know, effective, which would be what all state employees did and would, you know, change that a bit.
There, there actually is a tiny bit of difference between three percent and.
Between three percent and three percent versus a flat six. There is a tiny bit of difference there. So, whatever the board instructs us to do, we'll do.
My intention, given, given the fact that the legislature, uh, tiered them, uh, John would have been eligible for the three percent when the legislature, uh, did that under this policy. So I would, I would have the three percent, uh, July one be compounded on top of the three percent, um, to perhaps be paid up, you know, adjustment made in June thirtieth or whatever. However, it has to work out in the payroll system.
That sounds good. Or just say it's ninety-one oh eighty, oh eighty-nine?
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Do the math and.
Any other discussion on this matter?
Lynn, one other thing too. I noticed that it talks about the benefit eligibility, if he works more than a hundred hours a month, and that's full-time or part-time, less than a hundred hours a month. What does John work? Is he a full-time or part-time, or just for our information? Or does that change?
That was what I was gonna kind of let you all know, because I guess I work closer with John than anyone. Um, I, John can tell us about hours because it's so different. Sometimes he goes to New York and has to meet with lawyers. Uh, he attends the PPBO meetings. He attends all the various meetings that you see him in, plus meetings with staff. John, what would you estimate an average weekly, uh, amount of time you put in?
Uh, ten to fifteen hours would be an average week. Uh, some more than that, some less than that.
But less than a hundred, you'd say?
Yeah, I think.
A hundred a month?
Yeah, I think on an annual basis, I'm definitely, uh, half-time.
Okay.
Thank you, just curious. Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else?
Madam Chair, I guess, uh, this may be for Michael, but, uh, just for, uh, comparison's sake, uh, is there any anomaly here in this contract that, uh, should public scrutiny be focused on the difference between the C Board and the K Board would, would give rise to, uh, some questions? Or do they track fairly closely? I realize that there's a difference in terms of, you know, uh, that, that could be a justifiable credentials, seniority, uh, level of experience. But I guess I just don't want to be, uh, completely incongruous with what the C Board would be paying their CEO.
Their CEO is, is full-time, um, but other than that, um, no, I mean, they, um, the, the other contract terms are, are very similar. That, to, to this, they're, um, you know, the, I, I can't say they're exactly identical, but they're nearly identical, um, so. The, um, I, I will say there's just, um, it's, it's a, it's a public contract, but there is some, uh, of the, um, just specific way we had to handle a couple of things, um, on, uh, retirement issues in the CERS contract. But that's, um, that's not anything that's significantly different.
And what's the annual salary?
Um, you know, you asked me that question and, uh,
It's roughly double, wasn't it, Michael? Isn't it one sixty-something?
It's, I think it's one sixty-five-ish.
Yeah.
Yeah, roughly there, I think.
Thank, thank you.
Yeah.
And we're sure John's not going to apply for that job?
He, he likes us too much.
Okay.
Okay.
Miss, I see Mr. Summers' hand is up.
Okay, William.
I'm sorry, that's by accident. My, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm in the car.
Okay, go ahead, hear from me. Okay, if, is there no more discussion? Let me make sure. Dave, did you want to make the, the motion?
I would move the motion.
Okay, as discussed, and a second? William's second? Okay, a, a motion having been made um, and discussion held, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Say nay. No? Opposed, say nay. No? The motion is adopted and next we have.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you, John. You make it, you make it easy. Um, Ryan has an excused absence today. Uh, and a not a very pleasant one, he has to get his car fixed. And I think Rebecca, you're gonna take the K P P A update?
Yes, ma'am. He does apologize for not being able to be here. He appreciates being with you guys. So the legislate, the um, K P P A overview is update is in board books and I'm certainly not going to read through it. The legislative period is over, we've had some successes and. At least one disappointment, House Bill thirty, which was commonly called the pension spiking uh bill passed. Uh, that one is the one that aligns our statutes with a federal law case. Um, excuse me, um, legal case. Uh, that allows them to across the board raises get exempted from pension spiking. House Bill seventy one is the one that we were disappointed that it did not pass. That's, we wanted to reorg um and pro- create an office of financial management. Uh, there wasn't money attached to it or not significant money attached to it. Everybody was in favor. We did a whole lot of. Meeting with legislators individually and talking to them about these things and nobody had any concerns or qualms about it. It just didn't get passed before the veto period. Um, it got passed the House unanimously and to the Senate and got two readings and. They just ran out of time by the end and didn't, it didn't get the third reading and the pass out of the Senate after the. The two days in the after the veto period. So Ryan is um talking about how we would approach this maybe a little differently. This will be the third time that we will have to try it again, but he wants to try it again and will.
As I understand.
Differently.
I understand Ryan uh said that the fault was Kentucky was in an N C A A tournament game and they. Re- re- uh regen- adjourned early.
They do sometimes go straight to midnight on that last day and Kentucky was in the N C double A, that is sure. These are important things. Um, they are important. The others uh. Pieces that came through a Senate Bill ten, Senate Bill ten changes for C E R S only, this is uh. Interesting, it's just a a unique thing for C E R S only. For folks who have the dollar contribution health insurance tier. Um, and our career employees, it changes the amount of money that they get per year of service. Mr. Piercy?
Yeah, um, I can't let that pass without making a comment. Look, that that bill was filed and. When it first got filed, I just didn't think there was any way in the world it would ever pass and only benefit one system and leave the other two out, but much to my surprise. It did, and now you have a benefit in equity. That I don't think was the point of C E R S separation and it needs to be fixed. And this is just me talking personally, I'm not speaking for the board. But I did, and for full disclosure, speak with a legislator last week who agreed and said he's gonna file a bill. Bill to fix it next session. Now, whether it passes or not, who knows, of course, we'll have to see, but for anyone aggrieved by that. Uh, and and for anybody that can't understand, just because they're a member of the K or the S system, why they would not get. Uh, an enhanced contribution and while their health insurance will now cost them more, while the other side gets a reduction. Uh, just understand there are people that have noticed this and that we hope to see it fixed in the future. Because this was a a very disappointing piece of legislation from my point of view.
He, thank you for that explanation and I'm sure that uh Ryan will put this on the agenda. Rebecca, I guess you'll get that message to him.
Of course, sure.
Okay.
Um, Senate Bill one seventy six just changed the way that the legislature uh sets up some statutory committees, which of course the one that affects us the most is the pension. A public pension oversight board. Um, it didn't make major changes, just changes the timing in appointments, that those kinds of things. Senate Bill one eighty three is fiduciary duty change. Um, Steve's team is looking at potentially making some recommendations to the way that your proxy policy is, but. But just in general, that's not gonna be huge for us. Um, what it did was require. Um, uh, some sort of analysis if you're gonna vote against management, but generally speaking. Our proxy requires us to not vote against management, is that correct, Steve?
That that's generally correct, yes, I think, and and it applies only to the proxy advisor and not to um. Investment manager voted proxy, so we we have some work to do and and we hope to bring some um some recommended. Language changes to the proxy voting policy soon.
And if I may, it also only applied to shareholder proposals, not the company proposals. Um, and that was why the governor indicated he had vetoed it in the first place because, you know. Companies themselves can also have proposals like the ones the shareholders may do, but wouldn't require a study.
Then we put some some details about uh strategic plan implementation and how that's going. We're gonna have a much. More significant update at the June board meeting for you guys, we're gonna. Give you a presentation on that, we'll give you a whole lot more details. Uh, board retreats, so. Um, the boards have, the board leaderships have um requested us to look into. Having a board retreat in order to get all your hours at once and to um, you're required to have twelve training hours annually. This would allow you to meet together, do some in person, get to know each other a little bit better. Uh, fiduciary training, investment training, we certainly would be open to what kind of topics you want to hear if we do this, we're talking about. Uh, Monday, Tuesday, excuse me, Tuesday, Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Thursday, Friday kind of thing in August. Um, and so we've looked into some of the costs for that and and what that would be, so I believe that Ryan has met with. With John and with Ed about what those options are and. So you'll hear more about those coming up. You guys took that survey on it, this is, this was the board retreat discussed in the survey.
I wholehearted, I wholeheartedly support that effort.
Okay.
Rebecca, I'm, uh, if I could just jump in, um. I I know that the board during our board meetings has sort of a rote agenda that tends to focus on. On governance issues that require the board's input or approval. But it it seems as though we never quite get to some of the component parts of. Of service to our members that I think the board should be interested in just knowing about and reviewing. Uh, and I guess I'm looking at sort of the external facing customer service functions uh of K P P A. Whether it's the website, uh telephone responses, uh I I think. In some ways, we don't get much of a chance in our service on the board to advocate for our members interface with the system. And I think we've all heard recently of the disastrous um interface that the Social Security Administration has. If you've. If you've tried to call uh or or interact uh online with the Social Security Administration. You will be on hold for three hours, uh they will tell you it's a six hour wait and then into the three hour mark, they hang up on you. It it is just absolutely maddening, and if you can imagine, much like the Social Security constituency. Many of our constituents interfacing with K P P A would be uh senior citizens and in some cases their. Uh, approach to technology isn't um the best in the world. Um, and that's certainly true in my case. Um, so. I just put it out there that I would love in a retreat-like setting to make certain that those people who work hard to support the system. But primarily are in a communications role, a customer service role, that we'd have a chance to interact with them, get an idea of where their focus is. Uh, see what other resources or technology um they're using or need, that kind of thing. I've already said too much, but I guess I I'm hungry for. For that kind of discussion that we don't ever seem to get to in the course of a a regular board meeting, which I understand why.
I love that. We'll, I'll, we'll add that to the list.
Thank you. And Mary, you have your hand up?
Yes, uh, and to Dave's point, um, or in line with Dave's point. I noticed on the point above, Rebecca, you said that there's this. Part of the strategic plan is evaluating artificial intelligence options. And that you'll be reporting back to us about what happens on the strategic plan. I'm particularly interested in that. The benefits area is just ripe with products right now. In artificial intelligence, uh of the very things that we do every day. To service our members, to uh service our committees, it's just flourishing. And I'm particularly interested in what progress you're making and uh I think that will also lead into. Dave's uh comment about understanding how we can do better with the communication with our members. So just, I put an asterisk for my interest on that one.
Okay, you'll hear more about that when we talk about strategic planning for sure and we can talk about it with the board retreat as well.
Okay, thank you, Mary.
Um, Rebecca. The next piece is, this is capital budget processing, so that the state has a. Has a three-year biennial capital projects. K V P A generally does not have them until we do major uh technology modernization. Which we are considering, so we have a vendor, well, we don't have one yet. We're close to the end of an R F B to get a vendor to do a technical assessment that will take place mostly in fiscal twenty six. Um, and we've done obviously a t- a pile of research otherwise as well on that, so we are. Tentatively putting, we're putting it in the capital project, there are a lot of opportunities to update it and tweak it as we go through these bienniums. Um, uh seventy five million dollars for a capital project. Fifteen million in the first biennium to ramp it up, do the research, get some stuff done, fifty million to implement. Another ten million at the end to kind of. Close it out, get the checklist. Um, so you'll hear more about that when you, when we talk about strategic planning as well. This is also a budget year, you'll hear more from Mike about those pieces. And then lastly, we just wanted to um. Send some kudos to to K V P A staff. Um, we certainly don't want to leave anybody out, but uh Sherry Rankin and Sandy Harden, who are both on this call. And support the board did a ton of work to do some new trustee orientation. C E R S had their election this year and they had. One returning, Dr. Carver returned, and then two new ones, Stephen Webb and um Tommy McGraw were. Joined us on Monday in the boardroom and we went through a full day of just new trustee orientation. And I I think it's valuable and Sherry and Sandy did a really nice job prepping for that. That's the report.
Um, Rebecca, any update on the office space for for the investment team?
Um, we are in the last leg. So we are waiting on, right now the ball is in finance's court, we are um checking in with them. Every other week at the moment and next week we're gonna start checking in every week. Um, they have to approve our recommendation, so we got the proposals, we looked at them, we're asking for X. And they have to approve that, so it is in their court.
So, uh, how long's it been there?
Six weeks.
So is is X actual a a location?
No, no, I I can't tell you what the, because it's an R F B, I can't tell you.
No, I'm not, I'm just saying, is that what they're asked to approve? A location?
There is a.
Yes, and it's trickier this one because what we're asking for is class A space that is unusual. That's not the norm for state government and so it is being escalated through their commissioner and secretary in order to. Approve the the money in the end. It's close to what we expected, but. That's, it still takes that extra level of approval.
Rebecca, we uh. Tried to go through the normal process initially and it took a long time, so we initiated. Uh, some legislation uh is proposed. Uh, we sort of got scolded because we didn't escalate it within the finance cabinet. So I think we need to consider when to escalate that. Uh, that process with the finance cabinet to get this moving.
About six months ago?
Um, that was a year ago.
About a year ago.
It was a year ago that we we tried to do the legislation and rightly so, we. I think it was a misstep on our part not escalating it before then, so I I. We were scolded, but appropriately so, in my opinion. Um, so. We went back with them and they said, yes, we'll absolutely work with you, and they have. We've been, it's been very cooperative, but it is still a painfully slow process. So once we get the approval from them, which I expect that we will, but we have to get that approval. Once we do. We're talking about ninety more days, ninety to a hundred and twenty days to build it out. And then um, and then in theory we could move in, but we're probably. Looking at early, late summer, early fall.
Rebecca, what is the nature of the delay or the, I want, I guess I want to know that they have all the information they've requested from us. Uh, but it seems untenable that state government would not be able to make a decision within the timeframes you're talking about, and I don't need you to. Uh, you know, comment pejoratively, uh, I'm happy to do so, but it is a head scratcher to understand. Why a decision on a, a procurement of this kind, uh, I I guess I'm having a hard time understanding what is the decision point? That's creating the need for further consideration.
Um, the biggest delays at the beginning were um uh staffing issues on their side. Um, I feel like our team turned our information around timely every time. Um, the current delay, the six weeks delay to get this is because when you're talking about real properties who are dealing with all of the floods. So I think legitimately they, there's a reason for that delay over the last six weeks. The ten months, eleven months before that. It's been frustrating, but. I do, they've they've been responsive when we're asking, it just has been painfully slow, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Rebecca? Thank you, John, you're on next.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, some of the things that I had on my list, uh. Uh, Rebecca just covered appropriately, the proxy uh voting. Uh, policy may need to be of. Uh, amended or clarified the retreat. Um. I've got a meeting tomorrow with Ryan to discuss. Um, the details on that, we'll bring that forward. As a companion to that, perhaps. Uh, the trustee education policy. Uh, uh. The staff at K P P A are working on amendment to that. Make everybody have a same anniversary date, it'd all be done on a calendar year basis and other. Clarifications. Might also mention there's an unpaid invoice task force. And uh, they had a meeting this morning before the this meeting. And uh, that's moving forward and they're doing a comprehensive uh. Documentation of and reconsideration of the. Invoice process uh with the various employers for both the K and the C systems. Uh, the budget process is underway as well. And then uh. Uh. The capital project is sort of a new thought as far as I'm concerned. Uh, and that'll be moving forward as well, so that's all I've got to bring forward.
Thank you, John. Does anybody have any questions for John? Mary?
Sorry, uh, John, on the draft that you circulated, I guess for the last meeting about the um. Educational, the outside external training.
Right.
Credit, it had a proposal that you had to submit. Written materials that you got at the, you received, however you got your external training. And um, I just wonder if that seems to be burdensome, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Especially when you're not going to a event and it's, you know, can you transmit it electronically? They they have various um. Copyright limitations on the presentations oftentimes. What's, is there, is there a problem that, that, that? I just, I couldn't understand if we'd had a problem that you don't feel like people are really going to the programs or they're not absorbing the information or. What's the genesis of that and 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 I would not support that, uh, just because I think it's um. Right now, we've got a pretty vassal way of communicating completion of external training.
Yeah, I think the the thought is that uh. Uh, we need to have clear what was discussed and how it's relevant to the operations of the K R S system. Uh, and I've been to some of those seminars and the uh. The materials are volum. And I've been to some of those seminars and the, the materials are voluminous.
Exactly.
Yeah. So we'll consider that when we get to a final redraft of that.
And then you've got the question about storing that material. Where is it stored? Who's responsible for it? I mean, it just seems like unless we're addressing some problem that's been identified or something that is of a concern, it just seems like that's a, an extra burden without advantage.
Right. And John, if I could get, I don't know if Ashley's on the phone, but she, she explained to me that the majority of many of the board members attend things and banking and things, you know, things like this that actually would qualify for the CPE, that continuing educate. And so you, you said you wanted to see what was specific to the retirement system. Can you explain to me what the difference in that is? If it's, if it, you, we'd have to explain that banking, I, I was interested in banking because we got a bank account at KPPA or what kind of, you know, how does that, would that work?
I think we just need some way to relate the topic to the system and understand, you know, what was covered in the educational session.
Well, I think the, the topic, the heading of the presentation, which you have to put on the external training form, tells you what the topic is.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
So would that be, I mean, I, I know what I do. I just attach the certificate of completion, you know? You know, there might be something that you're taking that doesn't have a certificate of completion.
Right, right.
So.
Okay, we'll address those issues specifically in the next draft.
Why, why don't we put this on our, our coffee meeting?
Okay.
Okay, great. Okay, any other questions for John? Mary, thanks for bringing that up. Okay, closed session. Michael does not have a need for a closed session. Is there any trustees that would like to go into closed session to discuss litigation? Hearing none. We can adjourn our meeting and I want to thank everybody again for the election and.
Ms. Hampton, if I may, quickly. Just one thing, back on the appointment of two committees. There are, there are two things that I just, you don't have to do them publicly in this meeting, but if you could let Sherry know just moving forward. I know you appointed Mr. Lane as the investment committee chair, but as far as the remaining members on that committee and as well as the, the members of the joint retiree healthcare committee, the KRS members of that committee. And then the, the two members from KRS on KPPA. Yourself as chair of KPPA, or KRS, I'm sorry, yourself as chair of KRS and Mr. Lane as investment committee chair of KRS are automatically members of KPPA, but two other members, one elected, one appointed need to be on, need to be selected or appointed by you, as well as the members on the AC and DAC committees. Those don't have to be in a public meeting.
We did have a discussion, which each one of the, the existing committee members and everyone has agreed to continue. So if Sherry, if I, if, is that enough clarity?
I believe so.
Yes.
Michael?
That's perfect. I, I just wanted, since that was part of, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we had that coverage. So moving forward as those meetings start to happen, we knew exact, everyone was new who needed to be where. So thank you for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay, then the meeting is adjourned and thanks again for everybody and William gets to leave for his meeting on time. So.